Welcome, everyone. I am calling the October 3rd City Council meeting to order. And as a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx, and we have Councilmember De Michele attending remotely tonight. Welcome, Councilmember. So the first item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite you to join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have some special business this evening on our agenda, and the first one is ID 1164 Arts and Humanities Month proclamation. And I'd like to invite our arts program administrator, Amy Dukes, and several of our arts commissioners to the lectern. We have Rachel Wright with us this evening, who's the Vice Chair, Fred Poynier, Kimberly Kapistain, Carleen Cafferty, and I'm not sure that Eric is here. So come on and join me. So where is the National Endowment for the Arts, the National Endowment for the Humanities? The state arts and humanities councils across the country and the nation's 4,500 local art agencies have regularly issued official proclamations on an annual basis designated in October as National Arts and Humanities Month. And whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of every American, and the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country, whereas the arts and humanities help diverse communities across the United States explore their history and culture with the support and partnership of local educational and cultural institutions. And whereas the nation's arts and culture sector, nonprofit commercial education is an $877 billion industry that supports 4.6 million jobs, or 4.2% of the nation's economy, and boasts a $33 billion international trade surplus. And whereas despite significant losses to the coronavirus pandemic, the creative industries remain among the most vital sectors of the American economy, providing new opportunities for developing cities, creating jobs and economic activity within their own industry and across sectors, and making communities attractive to business development. And whereas Issaquah is home to a vibrant community of arts, culture, and humanities organizations, creative businesses, artists, makers, and creative workers that positively impact our city in immeasurable ways, now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 to be Arts and Humanities Month in our city. And I'm gonna ask Amy if she would like to say a few words and any of our board members.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Polly. Thank you, Council. Just want to say thank you for all of your support of our arts and culture program through the years and just really join us in celebrating all of the great arts and culture opportunities in Issaquah. And then I think Rachel was gonna say.
Thank you. We are so appreciative of the support and the growth of arts in Issaquah, and we just want to remind people about the efforts that are being made around our creative district, which is an important part. We're one of the first communities in the state of Washington to have a creative district. And with the Arts Commission, we are working on more campaigns for visibility to help people engage with the arts. So thank you.
Just to reiterate the thank you for your support in our community here. We see so much good that's done through the grant program that goes to support arts in our schools, Village Theater, the Salmon Days Festival, artists doing murals, paintings, music, writing. This is really important as part of being a vibrant and healthy and successful community. And we couldn't do it without your support. So thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming this evening. I wonder if I could get a photo with you as well.
You can get the council if they want to come down. If you're already up, I mean, come on. More of the barrier.
The president of the council runs.
Nice picture.
Okay, I'm gonna need to grab my second proclamation. But ID 1165, we are doing a proclamation this evening for Fire Prevention Week, and I'd like to invite Eastside Fire and Rescue Chief Ben Lane and his deputy director, Jamie Formesano, to the lectern to receive the proclamation. Oh, thank you, Tisha. And thank you both for coming this evening. So whereas the City of Issaquah is committed to ensuring the safety of all of those living and visiting our city, and fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. Whereas home fires caused 2,580 deaths in the United States in 2020, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 356,500 home fires in 2020. And whereas smoke alarms send smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of a fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying and reported home fires in half. And whereas individuals who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan that are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas Issaquah residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the smoke alarms and knows how to respond, and best practice is to check smoke detectors monthly and replace the unit every 10 years. And whereas Eastside Fire and Rescue first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas Eastside Fire and Rescue provides all hazard response service to respond to fire, medical hazardous materials, technical rescues, and emergency services needed in the City of Issaquah. And whereas the City of Issaquah and Eastside Fire and Rescue work together to protect and educate residents regarding fire prevention and safety, I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby declare October 9th through 15th, 2022, to be Fire Prevention Week in the City of Issaquah. And I'd like to invite you up to say a few words.
Oh, I'd love to. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you, Mayor, and members of the council and city staff for the recognition for our prevention and public education division within Eastside Fire and Rescue. I do have to say that that particular workforce is, they're the unsung heroes of the organization. They also work to ensure that the first responders are safe through their plans review, the annual fire inspections that the crews are out doing, and then certainly the public education that we're excited to get back out in the schools to do and engage. So again, on behalf of the men and women with Eastside Fire and Rescue, thank you for the recognition this evening.
Thank you. And also, could I ask you for a question?
Yes.
Let's see when I'm there. I've changed me now, but just. Yeah, right now. How did I ask the desk? Close it to the wire.
We'll do it. We'll do it.
Thank you. So the next part of our meeting this evening is audience comments, and members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first, and if you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, please press star three. And if you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon. This can vary by device, and one option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you are in the room and you did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak this evening? No one has signed up in advance. There are no members of the public in the room, but we do have a few virtually. So let me just monitor for a moment and see if anyone wishes to make a comment. No one is indicating a desire to speak. Thank you, City Clerk. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@issquawat.gov. And Council President Walsh, do you have any emails that the council has received that you would like to summarize on any of tonight's agenda topics?
Yes, we received three emails with strong support for ID 1235, the vehicle trespass ordinance, as well as an email with support for the sustainability portion of our budget as it relates to the hearing tonight. And that is the emails we received from the community.
Thank you. So the next item of business this evening will be committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Joe.
Madam Mayor, thank you. This Wednesday is the SCA Dinner down in Renton. If anyone else is attending, I'd be happy to drive and carpool with you. October 26th, Mobility and Infrastructure Committee will be meeting and will be reviewing the transit plan, getting a transit plan update. October 18th is Cascade Water Alliance Finance Committee meeting, and I'll give a report, I'll report out after that meeting to the full council. I don't think the mayor or I made it to the Cascade Water Alliance Board meeting. Apologies. We'll try to get ahold of those notes and give a summary once we get to review those. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember Hunt? Oh, no, not going off my list. Joining us remotely, Councilmember De Michele.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Can you hear me?
We can hear you fine.
Great. On September 21st, I attended the Regional Transit Committee. There were two items of interest on the agenda. The first was prioritization of future rapid ride routes for King County. I pointed out that the far east King County cities and Snoqualmie Valley were not included in the prioritization list, including the list of proposed routes for the year 2050 planning. And I urged Metro to include those areas in future rapid ride planning. We were supported in that point by councilmembers from Bellevue and Tequila. The second agenda item was a presentation and discussion on innovative and flexible service options for local communities. During the presentation and subsequent discussion, Metro officials emphasized the importance of funding proposals for future pilot programs, but also the importance of demonstrated community support. In this regard, the Snoamish Community Van Pilot Program was cited as an example of a successful community involvement project, bringing together the voices of diverse racial and cultural, as well as elderly and disabled community groups supporting the pilot project. So we may have things to learn from our neighbor Snoamish about their community van project. Thank you, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Planning, Development, and Environment Committee met on September 22nd. We had one item, and it did have a lot of parts, so please bear with me. It was ID 1249, which is Title 18, Administration and Procedures. And in this item, there were several components. One was the State Environmental Policy Act thresholds, and on this item, the committee was supportive of increasing the thresholds, requiring SEPA to 10 units for single-family and multifamily residential and 10,000 square foot of commercial. This aligns with neighboring jurisdictions, and recommendations were also given by staff to make these sort of changes, to align with our neighboring jurisdictions. And we were also supportive of moving higher than the PPC recommended SEPA limits to also provide a more attractive environment for building and missing middle housing, and this was a rationale that was provided by staff analysis. So those were the changes that we made, or those were the recommendations that we made on that item. Regarding third-party sustainable building certification, we were supportive of having this required for certain thresholds, and we were also supportive of having this on a separate, as a separate consideration from the SEPA thresholds due to the added complexity of sort of tying those two components of the code together, and also the fact that none of our neighboring jurisdictions have a connection between the third-party sustainable building certification process and the SEPA thresholds. So that was our rationale for our recommendation there. And we were supportive of incentives for lead certification. We just would prefer a separate route from SEPA thresholds. On forested hillside preservation, we were very supportive. There were some minor clarifications to language, but this is a new part of code. So one thing that we discussed was that this will need to be tested with the testers of the code, which is happening right now. And then on accessory and temporary uses and food trucks, we were supportive of the direction provided by PPC, Planning Policy Commission, to streamline the process and provide for annual renewal option. We also talked about the importance of working with business owners. We had several food truck owners provide public comments explaining their perspective as food truck operators and their experience with the regulations that were currently in place. So we had a conversation about making sure that there was meaningful engagement with those business owners going forward, and that amenities in the neighborhoods, including the food trucks, are important, and having those various amenities in neighborhoods is actually one of our goals for this code update. And then lastly, on through-block passages, we wanted to have citywide consistency when possible. We also heard an update on the testing of the code, which is going on currently, and we have a number of individuals who have volunteered to test out our code, so we look forward to hearing more once that process is complete. And then we will meet again, Planning Development and Environment Committee will meet again on October 6th, and we have two items, ID 1092, which is the Contractor Code of Conduct, and ID 1276, which is Title 18, Process and Procedures. I also had one other item, which is just to announce that there is an upcoming meeting of the K-4C elected officials. This will be a workshop, and it is on October 13th from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. This is a meeting for elected officials to discuss and learn about the King County city's climate collaboration, but there will also be a public town hall for residents and interested members of the public, which will be held later in October. I don't yet have the date for that public town hall. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. And welcome back, Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Great to be back. The King County Growth Management Planning Council met on September 28th in a virtual format. There were four items on the agenda. GMPC received a briefing on new data related to local sources and trends of greenhouse emissions, as well as new climate action planning tools developed to support local climate action by King County and other cities within King County. The GMPC was also briefed by the State Department of Commerce on a guidance document that they are developing to support local jurisdictions in meeting the requirements of House Bill 1220 from the 2021 session related to the analysis of racial discriminatory impacts of land use policy plans and regulations. GMPC concurred with the recommendations from the county on new Affordable Housing Committee member appointments. Those included Russell Zhou, representing the Master Builders Association of King and Snohomish Counties, Ryan Makinster of Washington Multifamilies Housing Association, and Mako Winkler Chin on behalf of the Mayor of Seattle, who is part of the Office of Housing in Seattle. Finally, GMPC received a long briefing on the Affordable Housing Committee's revised project schedule and allocating of countywide housing needs to cities. And I'm gonna let Council President Walsh talk about what the Affordable Housing Committee actually did instead of what we talked about, because it's a little more current. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Council Services Safety and Parks Committee met at 6:30 p.m. on Tuesday, September 20th, here in council chambers. We discussed ID 1235, Vehicle Trespass Ordinance, which is on tonight's agenda as AB 8476, and I will discuss it when it comes up on regular business. The Sound Cities Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board will be meeting this Thursday, October 6th, from 10 till noon. No action is anticipated. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee is meeting on Wednesday, October 12th, from 7 to 9 p.m. as an online virtual meeting. No action is anticipated at that meeting either. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Deputy Council President Hall?
Thank you very much. Just quickly to announce that the next meeting of the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors is next Thursday, October 13th at 4 p.m. at our headquarters on Newport Way Northwest. On the agenda is the 2023-24 budget, and I'll also be getting our last update on the agency's strategic plan, both of which are on the agenda tonight to keep you in the loop and to answer any questions that you might have. So a big thank you to Deputy Chief Ben Lane, incoming Chief Ben Lane, and its Deputy Director of Community Programs, Jamie Formesano. Right. So thank you very much for being here. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. Council President Walsh?
Thank you. As Councilmember Ray alluded to, I did attend the King County Affordable Housing Meeting on Thursday, where we had a robust conversation about the three proposed options for allocating housing by need, by income levels for each jurisdiction. So let me break that down in just a moment. Normally, what's happened in the past is there's been a King County number of housing units that are needed when we're creating our comprehensive plans, and then they allocate it by city. This year, what they're trying to do when they're updating these plans is, instead of just saying, you need to build this many housing units, they're saying, hey, not everybody is building housing that's affordable at the same rate, and so we need to approach this in a different way. So they've created three different models. One is everybody gets to, everybody gets to the same rate at the end. So as an example, some of the better affordable, more affordable areas in South King County have about 40% of their housing units that are 0 to 80% affordable. And so what they'd like us to do is get every city to that rate. And so what they're doing is they're allocating a 0 to 30% housing needs, 30 to 50, 50 to 80, 80 to 100, and 120 plus. And so the conversation's really, how do we create that formula? Because there's nothing really that says it. So ultimately, our group was split between options two and three, which is basically everybody needs to build at the same rate, or everybody needs to build toward the same number, but adjust it a little bit based on jobs and transport and all kinds of things. We ultimately leaned toward option three, which is the more complicated jobs, all of that. But we had a few questions, so we didn't take action. But then again, we are an advisory committee to an advisory committee, so we don't really take action in the first place. But it just, it's a really complicated idea. There is a chart out there that shows that no matter which one of these, the City of Issaquah is gonna be allocated, our need in the 0 to 30% range is somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000 housing units by the year 2044. And this is a problem, the lack of build, the lack of affordable build has been going on for decades, and we're trying to catch up in about a 20-year period. So really, an interesting conversation. Do not disagree that there is a need, but gosh by golly, there is not funding for it, and it hurts my heart to see that as an allocation that we are gonna be assigned. So just wanted to bring you up to speed. No real action there, but an interesting and important conversation. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President. The next item on this evening's agenda is the mayor's report. There will be an executive session this evening to discuss property acquisition per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per NC, and pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per NI. And these items are expected to take a total of 30 minutes, and action is anticipated in open session. So last weekend, if you live anywhere near Issaquah, you probably know that it was Salmon Days, and we had an estimated 160,000 visitors join us for the annual Salmon Days Festival. If you missed the salmon celebration, you can still view the Friends of the Issaquah Salmon Hatchery livestream salmon cam to get your fill of fishy festivities. And just for those that may not be aware, the salmon don't only come home to Issaquah on Salmon Days weekend, you have weeks and weeks and weeks to go down to the hatchery and see fish coming up. Washington State University has given us a Community Energy Efficiency Program grant. So I'm very excited to announce that the city has successfully secured a grant from Washington State's University Community Energy Efficiency Program, and the funds from the CEEP will support heat pump installations for low-income families, as well as provide an opportunity for any resident to receive a heat pump incentive. The grant will also provide translation services to reach the broader community, job training for women and minorities who are interested in entering the HVAC sector, and support to women and minority-owned businesses and business enterprises through targeted HVAC trainings and installation recruitment. This grant, in conjunction with rebates offered through the Inflation Reduction Act, will help expand our ability to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from the built environment, increase energy efficiency, and save our residents money. We are looking forward to a long-term partnership with the CEEP and our neighboring jurisdictions to expand energy-efficient programs for Issaquah residents. We have some upcoming community events. The Baby Boomer Retirement Boot Camp is on October 9th at the Issaquah Senior Center. They are hosting a complimentary session for people who are considering retirement or who have recently retired. The event features workshops and speakers, and will help you make the most of your next chapter in life. Space is limited, and registration is required, so you can visit the city's website for more details. There's also a State Park Free Pass Day coming up on October 10th. It is for World Mental Health Day, so let's get everybody outside and enjoy our outdoor spaces. There is no discovery pass required for that day. Kokoni Fry Release is coming up. Please join the Kokoni Work Group, UWRP, elected officials, the Snoqualmie Tribe, and caring citizens on October 12th from 5 to 6:30 p.m. at the Lakes Snoamish State Park Boat Launch. This is the annual Kokoni Release and Ceremony. This is a really special event, celebrating the successes of the Kokoni Work Group and those who have supported efforts to restore the native Kokoni salmon in Lakes Snoamish. These salmon fry are part of a strategy to restore the native Kokoni population to healthy levels after decades and decades of decline. So the first fry release in Lakes Snoamish was in spring 2010, and there have been ceremonial releases each spring through 2016. The last event is the Every Ways to Take Eco Action Day. On October 19th, the city's hosting a learning event to discover new ways to reduce waste, use less toxic materials, and to properly sort items for disposal. The event is at the Issaquah Depot Museum from 7 to 8 p.m., and registration is required, and there will be giveaways included with the participation. And that concludes the mayor's report for this evening. The next informational item is ID 1275. We are welcoming Eastside Fire and Rescue staff to talk about budget and the Eastside Fire and Rescue strategic plan. And I'd like to invite Eastside Fire and Rescue Captain or Chief Ben Lane and Deputy Director Jamie Formesano to make a presentation. Before we start, I'd also like to let the public know that we have councilmembers that serve on the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board. Councilmember, Deputy Council President Hall and Councilmember Ray, and Councilmember Mertz as our alternate. Council President, Mr.?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, city staff, and those viewing online. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about Eastside Fire and Rescue's 2023 and 2024 budget process. Next slide, please. We use a finance and administrative committee process, which is comprised of one of the board directors, and then also the city staff from respective partner finance divisions. So I do want to thank Deputy Council President Hall and Robert from your finance staff for attending the meetings. I'm not sure if it was because how awesome the the presentations were or the lunch, so yet to be decided, right? In the most recent Finance and Administrative Committee meeting, the last meeting we had was on September the 28th. That was our third meeting to go over the comprehensive budget process. And the FAC, short for the Finance and Administrative Committee, they referred those five items to the EFOR Board for final consideration and adoption at our upcoming October 13th meeting. Next slide, please. Our '23 and '24 budget, this does incorporate our original approach to the budget process was we were assuming, or maybe fingers crossed, hoping, for an 8% CPIW for '23, and then we were using 4% for '24. As we all know, that came in a bit higher at 9.5%. This budget, we made the necessary adjustments, and this budget does incorporate that. This also includes a wildfire mitigation program. I know there's been quite a bit of discussion around here in Issaquah, being in the Wui area. So it's something that we are actively recruiting, and we have interviews, I believe, scheduled in the coming weeks for those specific positions and hoping to get that division built out and operational to start the necessary preventative measures that the community could prevent or could benefit from. This also incorporates our Core Connect. It's an MIH program, and this is fully funded by the King County EMS levy, but you'll see that incorporated in this budget. There is no new additional program adds. And then on October of last year, Eastside Fire and Rescue entered into a contract for EMS and fire service with Woodinville Fire and Rescue. And so now they're now part of the organization. This does incorporate revenue from that contract. Next slide, please. This is just an overdue, an update on our overview of the expense update. You can see that we presented some different numbers in May, July, and then into September. I do have to say that this is the first time that Eastside Fire and Rescue has embarked on what we call a zero-based budgeting process. With the addition of Woodinville to the organization, we have a new finance director. So it was a really great opportunity for us to just kind of clean this slate and go through line item by line item. And so we were able to dial in these numbers much more accurately, and that is incorporated into this budget. Next slide, please. This here is the revenue projections. And one of the latest additions is, again, the revenue add for the contract for services with Woodinville. And you'll see that that is under the non-partner revenue, and then below that, the total operating revenue and the partner contributions there. Next slide, please. This is just to give you a visual on the funding formula and how it's been applied to the city of Issaquah as an originating partner of Eastside Fire and Rescue. That big spike is really, if you look at it, it's a tenth of a percent there. And then if you look across the funding formula history distribution, you'll see that, for the most part, there's either an up or a down every few years when we reevaluate that. We use, the funding formula is quite complex, but just to simplify it, it's essentially 85% AV, so assessed valuation. And we use those numbers from the King County Assessors Office, and then 15% of that is from call volume. And what we have adopted moving forward is we will adjust those numbers in alignment with the two-year budget cycle. So we just re-up those, and that's where you can see, moving into '23 and '24, there is actually a decrease in the percentage for Issaquah. That doesn't mean that your AV decreased just overall in comparison to the other four partners. It was a less of an increase. Next slide, please. And this is just an overview of the partner contribution history. I do want to point out that if you look in '22, it's 4.67% increase, and then in '23, there's this spike of 10.55. Although a marked increase, what it doesn't capture, and actually a later slide does, it'll be able to articulate that a bit better, is that in 2020, 2021, and 2022, the equipment replacement fund and the capital facilities payments were made by end fund balance. So that was adjusted and absorbed within our operational budget, and that was not a payment that our partner agencies paid for those last three years. So in '23, although a 10.56% increase, 4.42% of that is the reinstatement of those two payments. Now, all along, we've been communicating those are going to have to come back. We absolutely did not predict that it would be in the midst of a 9.5% COLA on the back of a 6.3% CPIW increase in '21. So that was just a bit more of an explanation on that increase there. So next slide, please. So this is just the operating fund contribution. And as I just stated, in '21, the Washington CPIW rate increase was 6.3%. And again, in '22, it was 9.5. But if you look at the overall operational increase, it's 6.13%. I would just like to point that out. I think that this is a direct correlation of what you can do when you work together as a collaborative organization. That cost savings is spread across the partners. That demonstrates our fiscal responsibility and the efficiency that we have. Next slide, please. And this just demonstrates that the equipment replacement fund history, so again, in 2020, 2021, and 2022, those payments were not made, and we used end fund balance to cover those, and then the reinstatement of that in '23. And that will be divided using, again, that funding formula across the partners. So that's the total payment, and then the prediction there for '24. Next slide, please. And this is the Capital Facilities Maintenance Fund. You can see the three-year drought there where there was no payment. And then there's actually an end fund balance strategy that's on the table and consideration for the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board at our next meeting to cover that payment, again, in '23 and '24. So you could potentially see a five-year span where that particular payment was covered by end fund balance. Okay, so ambulance rate discussion. In 2020, we conducted a comprehensive review of this process. And then Eastside Fire and Rescue made rate increases of 28%, and we landed on $1,050 for transport and the mileage fee at $19.41 per mile. Next slide, please. Again, looking for creative ways to absorb some of the impacts of the record CPI increase. Staff brought forward an original recommendation or a proposal to increase ambulance fees. And then we subsequently came back to the last FAC meeting, and our proposal that's on the table and for consideration of the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board is to take the 6.3% CPIW in '21 and the 9.5 for '22, and roll that into the mileage increase. That's directly correlated with the increase in fuel prices. And then just a slight bump in the overall ambulance transport fee of $1,100. That puts us in alignment with several other King County fire agencies. And that would, the projected revenue is, additional revenue would be at $52,000 there. Next slide, please. So this is our end fund balance projection. What we, and what this also captured is that we have a fully funded liability fund. Eastside Fire and Rescue is governed by a board policy, a budget management, and reserve policy. So we have our liability reserve fund is fully funded, and our operating reserve is funded at 10%. And that's in alignment with what the expectation is of that policy. And so, so right now, the projected end fund balance is 1.1 million. And again, as we get close to the end of the year, we'll be able to dial that in. And the next slide, I'll be able to articulate what the proposal is upon there. So the proposal for consideration in front of the EFOR Board is, with that 1.1, is to take $750,000 and set that aside. We'll be applying for a PFOS grant, state grant, and it's a percent match grant on that. So if we're awarded, that money will be there. If we do not, if we're not granted that specific PFOS grant, that consideration will go back to the EFOR Board for the direction on what they want to do with the end fund balance. And as you can see there, 150,000 of that 1.1 will be earmarked to cover those '23 and '24 Capital Facility Maintenance Fund payments. And then there still might be a little bit of change when that's all said and done, but we'll be better able to articulate that as we get much closer to the end of the year. And that concludes that thrilling presentation on budget. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to do my best to answer them.
Councilmembers, are there any questions for Chief Lane? Not seeing any, Chief.
Okay, thank you. You're being easy on the new guy. I appreciate that.
And Councilmember DeMichele, if I miss a raised hand or something, please let me know.
Okay. Well, I guess, no commercial break, and we'll go right into the strategic plan for 2022. Okay, next slide, please. I might be missing a slide there. Oh, I'll just roll with it. So just to, I just want to touch on the current strategic plan, the one that we are putting back on the shelf and then we barking on whatever is adopted in front of us. When Chief Clark arrived, one of the very first things he did is he took the agency on our first-ever strategic planning process, and that was in 2016. And that was a complete overhaul. We adopted new mission, vision, and values. We were able to vet those in this process, and so there is no change there to the mission, vision, and values. You'll see we have reviewed and updated strategic priorities. And the other really important thing is this aligns with our two-year budget process. So as we're developing the direction for the agency, we're also crafting a budget that will be able to support some of those initiatives. This particular slide here, it just demonstrates the process and how we engage both internal and external stakeholders. I had the privilege of attending all of our community meetings. It was nice to get community input. And to be honest, we got a lot of it via our online server. We had over 460 members complete that. Very great valuable feedback, as I know you can appreciate that. So it was a great way for us to be connected to the community. Next slide, please. And this is the makeup of the advisory committee. They sort of help steer the creation of the strategic objectives and our priorities. And as you can see, there's a great mix of members at all ranks and levels within the organization. And then we have community leadership captured there as well. And to be honest, the advisory committee meetings that we had, I was thrilled by the level of input that we received from the community members, and that was absolutely incorporated into what you're seeing here as the proposed final product. Next slide, please. Our strategic priorities. And those on the EFOR Board, we presented this at our last meeting, and you'll notice that there's an addition at number seven around Board of Directors. That was based off of some direct feedback and dialogue, so there'll be some additional discussions at our upcoming meeting for you to settle on. Does that sound like the right priority and the objectives associated with that? The interesting thing was is that the internal feedback we received and the community feedback, it really aligned in a lot of ways, and one of those was training specifically. So there's definitely a hunger and a desire for the members within our organization to train. I wish I had the number for you from how many new members we added since the last time we went through the strategic planning process, but I can confidently say it's over 60% of the members are new to the organization. We have a lot of very young leaders, so there's a phenomenal opportunity to have some influence and help them grow and be successful in their leadership roles. Next slide, please. And these ones here, this came directly from the feedback and discussion at the EFOR Board level. We wanted to be a bit more intentional around our DEI objectives. And then as I was able to articulate in the budgetary presentation, it just demonstrates the fiscal responsibility Eastside Fire and Rescue is able to represent in that. And so we just wanted to make sure that was grounded in the strategic planning process so that we don't lose sight of, as one of the things that organizational leaders, and I believe city leaders are very proud of. And then the third item there, that's just some of the things that staff gleaned from the conversation to help direct the EFOR Board members and the dialogue that we're looking forward to in the upcoming meeting in October. And then, next slide, please. And part of the great feedback and dialogue in the last EFOR Board meeting was how does our organization measure these metrics? And so it's something that we used, and the first time we went through this is we'll do a quarterly report out for staff. You'll see names associated with who's leading that particular strategic priority or objective. And then we'll be providing a written dialogue around where we are. Is that in progress? Has it been completed? And that will help board members be able to hold one, staff accountable to what we're committed to, and be able to ask questions to help maybe redirect us in different areas. And that concludes my presentation on the strategic plan. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief. Do we have any questions on the strategic planning process? Council President?
Thank you. Welcome to question and answer.
Yes.
So I really appreciate the presentation. Enjoyed looking through the strategic plan. Since you mentioned this is now your second strategic plan, I know you showed that you have some metrics that you've used in a different document. Do you know if you succeeded in your objectives in the previous plan? And then, carrying on with that, how many of those objectives are, you know, do you have a sense that many of those objectives are also occurring in the second plan? Or is it mostly new type of things?
So great questions. I'm confident that what was put in front of us in the first strategic plan, again, having grown up in the organization, started in '94, became part of Eastside Fire in '99, having grown up in the organization, started in 94, became part of Eastside Fire in 99, not that we didn't have great leadership, we just never had a strategic planning process. And so this really helped guide and direct from those that were working out on the line. If I had an idea, it's like, does it align with the strategic objective? What are the priorities? And we were able to bring forward programs that fell in line with what was in that strategic planning process, and that was supported. Moving into this new process, I would say there's some commonalities around training because in the fire service, fire and EMS service, training is always an element of that. But what we have is, due to our intentional effort in our recruitment, we're bringing in members that have different perspectives, come from different backgrounds. They didn't come in the same way that myself and my colleagues, you know, 30 years ago where you had this volunteer fire service route and you were, that was the way in. Now we're bringing people in who are coming from very successful careers and jobs otherwise. And so they bring in a completely different thought process. So there's training around that. I would say that that is, those are the areas where there's similarities. Diversity, equity, and inclusion, that wasn't part of our strategic planning process previous. It's something that the agency is doing a lot of work around. I'm very proud of that. I'm proud of our recruitment process, and we're working hard to be much more reflective of the communities that we serve. And so I certainly look forward to see what's coming out of this. And we've kind of been, as many other organizations have been, in the lull in the midst of COVID. And so the timing is really right with this new strategic plan hopefully adopted, ready to hit the ground running in '23, where we're getting back to engage in the community. And it's going to regenerate the life within the organization and be able to help us set the new direction.
Any other questions for the Chief? Chief, I just want to thank you and Jamie for coming tonight and really appreciate the work that you've been doing on strategic planning. It was back in the day when I was a council member and serving on EFOR, it was so exciting to bring on a new chief and watch the evolution of this amazing organization. We tried some goal setting. So I mean, one of the goals we set was to do a strategic plan. And after you get through the strategic plan, you pretty much have the whole thing down. So it's been fantastic to watch the agency evolve. I'm so proud of where you are and also for our reps that serve. And, you know, they come back and they update this council continuously on the work that EFOR is doing. And it's great that you took the time to do a little bit of a deeper dive on both the budget and the strategic plan. We really appreciate it. So thank you very much for coming tonight.
My pleasure. Thank you for the invite.
Go ahead.
Fantastic. I just had a few comments. I wanted to separate it from the questions. I know you mentioned metrics and kind of all of that. That my view in looking over the strategic plan was, how do you know if you're going to succeed? How do you know? So I would really encourage you, even if you keep it separate, to really think about SMART goals, which I have written down, I always forget the S. Specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound, that I really would love to see. And then the other thing that I noticed when I was looking over it, on the personnel development section, you've got a really great description, which says, "Create a supportive culture that attracts, retains, and develops personnel." But when I looked over the objectives underneath it, it was a lot about developing the existing personnel, but I didn't see any specific objectives around retention or attracting new members. So just think about, you know, what are the specifics that you want to accomplish in those areas? Because we all know that's super, super important for the organization going forward. And so I would just love to see a little bit of specificity around those areas since they're so key to your development. Thanks.
Thank you. That's great feedback. Appreciate that.
And as you can tell, this is a council that likes data and measurement and reporting back. We were inspired by the work that EFOR did and glad that our city also got to do its first strategic plan within the last five years. It's fantastic. Any other comments before we close it out? Deputy Council President?
Just to say that we have hammered that point home, council members, Ray, Martz, and I, several times. So I've captured some of those comments, too. I'll make sure to bring them up during the next EFOR board meeting, too. But thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you both.
Can I turn this off?
So the next item of business this evening for council is the consent calendar, and it was distributed in advance. If it's authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Is there a motion?
Yes. I move to approve the consent calendar as written.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the motion before council is to approve the consent calendar as presented. Can all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously, 7-0. The next item of business this evening, we have a couple of items related to our upcoming budget. So AB 8402 is a public hearing on the 2023-24 budget ordinance, and council will be conducting that public hearing this evening. So I'd like to invite Chief Financial Officer Robert Hamud to present the item.
Nice to see you.
Good evening. Good to see everybody as well. Give me just a moment here while I share my screen.
Did you see this one? This looks pretty good. Yeah. But you can, if you want to. You can.
So tonight is the introduction of the Agenda Bill 8198, the 2023-24 budget ordinance. And the city code requires cities to hold two public hearings prior to adopting the budget. The preliminary public hearing will be tonight, after I show the introductory slides. And the final public hearing will be November 7th, which is the tentative action date for passage of the ordinance. In the schedule, we have public hearings tonight with ordinances introduced for both budget and property tax. October 10th, which is next week, Committee of the Whole, budget deliberations. October 17th is a budget deliberations if needed, as well as October 25th, depending on council's requests. November 7th, again, will be the final public hearing on both the budget and the property tax ordinances, and tentative adoption date for both the budget and the property tax. So just a review of last time, and for the public's benefit, this is the 2023 budget overview, so the first year of the two-year budget ordinance. And you can see general fund is about 43% of the total budget, and the total budget, again, for all funds will be approximately $165.15 million. Utility funds, water, sewer, stormwater, approximately 22%. Capital projects, about 13%. Special revenue funds, about 11%. And debt service, about 2%. Internal services, which includes IT, facilities, risk management, is about 9%. And 2024, you can see the budget totals are $174.2 million for that year. General fund is about 40% of that total. Capital projects, about $22.3 million of that total. Special revenue funds, about 13%. Utility funds, about 25%. And this is a breakdown, again, of the expenditures by department. So again, the proposed general fund budget totals are approximately $72.9 million in 2023. And you can see the public safety departments are in the bottom left-hand corner, the fire contract, that you just heard from Chief Lane, about $8.06 million. Police, about $15.7 million. And then you have municipal court, about 1.3. And then we have parks at 11.6. Community planning and development, 8.64. And you can see the administrative departments on the top. And then inter-fund transfers to other funds, 14.7 million on the left-hand corner. In 2024, the funding is, again, about 69.7 million. Some of that reduction, again, was due to some ARPA funds in the previous slide. You can see police department, about 16.25 million. Fire contract, 8.55 million. Parks and community services, about 11.7. Community planning and development, 8.35. And the administrative departments in the top right-hand corner, inter-fund transfers down to about 10.3 million, excuse me, 10.23 million. Personnel overview, I did show the slide of the Committee of the Whole last week. You can see the proposed budget adds approximately 17.5 FTEs in 2023 over 2020. The pre-recession FTE maximum in approximately 2009 was 278.02 budgeted FTEs. 2022, the adopted FTE count was 269.38. And 2024 proposal at the end of the biennium, the second year of the biennium, will be 288.88. Proposed impact on fund balance. Total fund balance as a percentage of expenditures for the 2022 forecast, it's about 56%. For the 2024, the second year of the biennium, at the end would be approximately 30%. Undesignated fund balance will go from an estimated 33% in the ending forecast for 2022 to 17% in 2024, at the end of 2024. And if there's, I can entertain questions right now before we request the public hearing to be open.
Council, do you have any questions? And Councilmember DeMichele, raise your hand if you have a question. Okay. No questions, Robert. So I'm now going to open the public hearing at 8:00 PM. And for those of you who have joined us tonight and would like to make comments but did not sign up in advance, please raise your virtual hand. If you're, City Clerk, do I, should I go through all of the instructions again? Has anybody joined since we had our public comment?
No. We have the same individuals online.
Well, I think what I may do is go back to Council President if you wanted to share comments. We had some late comments on budget this evening, if you wanted to share that. I'm not sure that there was many more in writing.
Yeah, I think most of the things that came in just before our meeting were supporting the administration's recommendation on budget and including the 1% increase over the 2022 property levy, and then a few questions. So maybe I can convey those. First question was, or was asking us to define acronyms used to help the wider audience understand. One example was CPD, so if you could do that. And then question about possible revenue sources, and if you could talk about the business and occupation tax and why that isn't included in the levy and revenue source public hearing? Or if it is, point out what that portion is. Thanks.
Thank you, Council President Walsh. I'll try and the first one, CPD is community planning and development department.
Excuse me, Mayor, just to clarify, we still are in the public hearing portion, so if we want to move on, it might be best to-
To do that outside of the public hearing.
Yeah, and maybe if I could just confirm, we do have a few members of the public who've been on the line the duration of the meeting. So if any of you wish to make comments under this budget public hearing, please let us know now by raising your hand or sending a chat. Okay, and no one's indicating a desire to speak. Thank you, City Clerk. Is there any objection to closing the public hearing? So the hearing none, the public hearing is closed at 8:02 PM. No action is being requested on this item tonight. The second public hearing on the budget will be held on November 7th to 2022, after which the council is anticipated to adopt the budget. The next budget meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 10th, at 6:30 PM here in the city council chambers. So City Clerk, would it be okay now for the CFO to address those? Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. So again, the first question, community planning and development. The second question, in terms of the business and occupations tax, so this tax is separate from the property taxes that are collected, is actually a city ordinance, it's not per state code. We have the ability, per state code 35A, to levy this tax as an option, is an option that the city has taken. So it's a different governance of rules, and City Attorney Turpin can interrupt me at any time, but it is a different interpretation of the rules. It is set by the city, it's set by the city council. The rates are set very similar to the other fees of the city. They can be amended by council per ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments before I move on to the next item? Okay. And again, it's Robert. It's a-
Mayor Pauli?
Yes? Oh, sorry, Councilmember DeMichele, I keep forgetting to look at you. Yes.
That's okay. I just wanted to point out that we did receive an email from Ann Fletcher, supporting the increase in personnel in the sustainability department, and also urging us to look at the percentage of the budget that we are investing in sustainability. So it did come in very late, and so Council President Walsh likely did not see it, but I think it was meant to be a comment for the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. The next item this evening is AB 8403, and it is the 2023-24 budget levy and revenue sources. And again, council will be conducting a public hearing. And Chief Financial Officer Robert Hamud is still here and will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. Just a moment for me to share my screen again. So tonight, similar to the budget ordinance, we are also required to introduce the property tax ordinance. And we also have a subsequent public hearing after a brief presentation. So under the RCW, requires jurisdictions levying property tax to hold a public hearing on revenue sources prior to adopting property tax levies. Again, tonight is the first public hearing. Property tax ordinance will be for the final city council vote on November 7th. Other revenues introduced tonight, those needed council actions, will return on November 7th. So the property tax of the city of Issaquah represents about 16% of the general fund's $63 million revenues forecasted for 2023. And you can see, in relation to sales tax, it's approximately less than half of the sales tax of the city, and it is actually less than some of our operating departments. So property tax is an essential part of city services, a smaller portion than sales tax. You can see business and occupations tax is about 12%. So you can, again, you can see that the property tax levy, again, generated by the properties within the city, 16%. Allowable property tax increases. So the state law does permit jurisdictions to increase property tax annually by 1% or the implicit price deflator, whichever is lower. So the implicit price deflator is essentially set by state law. It's a measure of inflation in relation to an annual year-over-year increase each September. It's set by the state. The implicit price deflator for 2023 is 6.46. And since it is higher than the 1%, you would take the lower per the state law plus new construction, so the limit is 1%. The value of 1% on the current proposed levy is approximately $10811. Administration recommends the council set the levy with the 1% increase. Value of median residence. So property tax values for 2023, this is the assessment that was just conducted by the county this year in Issaquah, is expected to increase about 43%. And again, that's a reflection of the current real estate market in the city of Issaquah, outperforming most years probably in the history of the city at this point. Median residence value is expected to increase from $962,000 to $1.4 million. So again, that varies property to property within the city, neighborhood by neighborhood, in some cases, street by street. So when you look at your tax bills, everybody might see a little bit different increase. Estimated regular levy due to city increases goes from 709 to 794, about an $85 difference in 2023. We have new calculations that this number may adjust slightly when we get the finals because right now we're still on estimated rates from the state, from, excuse me, from the county. Historically, the city levy is 10% of total property tax for residents, an average growth of 4.4% per year over the last decade. So again, when you look at your tax bill, there's actually, if you go to the King County website and you pull out your tax bill, there are different proportions. Again, we're only 10% of that total tax that you see on the bill. Other revenue proposals, we have recreation and community planning and development fees, administrative adjustments authorized by the Issaquah Municipal Code, but specifically for CPD, community planning and development tables, there is action necessary to update those tables. We also have the increased court and jail contracts with partner cities, and we're proposing 5% as introduced in the budget process already to council, and previously adopted utility rate increases. Just a side note to answer the question on business and occupation tax a little bit earlier, that there are no tax increases, there's no proposed rate increase on business and occupation tax at this time. And is there any questions?
Council, do you have any questions? I'm not missing Councilmember DeMichele this time. Okay, Robert, I'm not seeing any questions. So I'd like to open the public hearing at 8:10 PM. And City Clerk, can you check to see if anyone who is in attendance remotely would like to speak? Yes, those members of the public who are on the line, please let us know if you'd like to make comments during this public hearing. like to make comments during this public hearing. Just going to monitor this for a moment. I don't see anyone wishing to make comments.
Thank you, City Clerk. Is there any objection to closing the public hearing? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed at 8:10 PM, and there is no action being requested on this item tonight. The item will next be considered by the city council at the November 7th, 2022 city council meeting. The next, I am, thank you very much, Robert. The next item of business this evening under regular business is AB 8476, amending Chapter 9.40 of the Issaquah Municipal Code with respect to criminalizing vehicle trespass and the making or possession of motor vehicle theft tools. The request before the council this evening is to adopt the ordinance, and I'd like to invite City Attorney Rachel Bender-Turpin to present this item. Rachel? Sorry?
Sorry, Mayor, I was under the impression that council regards to want it to present this item.
And I had checked with the city administrator today, who said that the city wanted to present on it, but I would be, I would be happy to discuss this item today.
Okay, and I will tell you, what my notes say is that you both will have an opportunity, so.
I'm happy to present on it.
Okay.
So staff generally will present, and then the committee chair follows up with comments.
And you can decide if you want to add additional comments at that time or not.
Sounds wonderful.
Okay, there we go. Okay. Do you have a microphone? Are you coming up to the microphone? Yep. That way, Councilmember DeMichele can hear you.
Verbally is just fine.
All right. Good evening. For the record, Rachel Bender-Turpin, City Attorney, thank you for having me here this evening. I'm here to talk about this ordinance, which would enact several changes to Chapter 9.40 of the Issaquah Municipal Code, which is a portion of the criminal code that deals with crimes pertaining to property. These particular code sections would deal with crimes dealing with motor vehicle-related property crimes in particular. One of those code provisions would be to adopt by reference a RCW that prohibits the making or possessing of certain, what are called motor vehicle burglary tools, which are things like Slim Jims, things that are kind of commonly used to either break into or used to steal vehicles, like fake keys, that kind of thing. The other is a separate section of the municipal code, like a unique section to the city of Issaquah, although not actually unique to Issaquah, but not an RCW, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, that would criminalize what's called vehicle trespass, or some cities call it unlawful entry to vehicle. But essentially, it would criminalize someone being in a vehicle that didn't belong to them without the owner's permission. This would allow the police department, and then down the road, the city prosecutor, to take action in cases where maybe there wasn't enough evidence, or there wasn't enough resources for the King County Prosecutor's Office to file charges on someone for stealing a motor vehicle or felony possession of a motor vehicle, but there was still evidence that someone was in a vehicle that they shouldn't have been in without the owner's permission. The reason for these particular code provisions being drafted and coming before you is just due to a quite striking increase in property crimes over the last year, including a very large increase in theft of motor vehicle crimes statewide.
Thank you, Rachel. I will now turn it over to Committee Chair Marts, if you would like to provide the Services Safety and Parks Committee recommendations for this item.
Sure, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the Services Safety and Parks Committee did review this proposal at the September 20th meeting. Following a staff presentation and discussion, the committee unanimously recommended approval of the proposed ordinance. So it had been initially proposed to be brought forward on consent, and we asked for it to be brought forth as regular business, really because the subject of public safety has been so much in the minds of both us as a council, and our focus this year on public safety, as well as from the public. This issue generated a lot of interest and support from the public and their feedback ahead of the committee. And so we really, we wanted to just provide a little light on it before making a decision on it. As has been noted, this actually got its start, I believe, the first city in King County was Auburn, and this, the part of the bill that is not adopting, just adopting by reference the RCW, the other piece of it, it had been mentioned to me by members of the IPD that they would be interested in seeing this. In fact, the chief has reviewed this bill, doesn't have any concerns with our potential adoption of it. I can't remember, did you mention the city prosecutor is also supportive of this measure?
Yes, correct. She's reviewed it and is supportive of it as well.
So like I said, the public was very supportive. We have received, I think, one negative thus far, you know, one citizen feedback against, but you know, something like a half dozen strongly in favor of it. And like I said, the, I've actually spoken with mayors in South King County that have been very happy that they've adopted it. So all that went into a strong recommendation from the committee. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Marts. Does the council have any questions? W, Council President?
I have a couple of clarifying questions. First and foremost, thank you for your work. Thank you to the committee, I was able to watch on YouTube while you had your meeting, and it was a good one. Thank you for diving into it so much. So a couple quick clarifying questions. First is these tools, Slim Jim, which I thought was a form of jerky, but I guess is a tool too. These tools are own, their only intent could be a criminal use. They couldn't be mistaken for any other kind of household tool or anything like that.
There, that's a very good question. The way the statute is written, it could, it essentially has a list of potential tools, and it could involve tools, other tools that aren't listed in the statute, any tool that, anything really, that you could use or were going to use to try to steal a car, break into a car. But the important part is that there have to be circumstances, that evidence and intent to use those in the commission of breaking into a car or stealing a car. So there has to be a tie to that. So someone, for instance, tow truck drivers, they drive around with those tools all the time, that's part of their trade, is to help people get into their cars when they lock themselves out. They, if they were pulled over, there would be no issue, because there'd be no, no other evidence that they were going to be utilizing those in commission of a crime. However, if someone had those in their backpack, and they were sitting in a vehicle that didn't belong to them, that had, you know, a window-
Right, they didn't have permission to be in the vehicle or something.
Exactly, yes, without permission, and you know, it's clear that a Slim Jim had been used, then that would be evidence that, that those were used in the commission of a crime.
Okay, thank you for that walkthrough, appreciate that. And then can you also walk through some of the emails that we got earlier this afternoon with, I think Councilmember Hunt had a few questions, and then I saw, I wasn't able to read the email that had some comments from Chief Schwan. Can you?
Yes, let me grab my computer for a sec. Oh, great, well, perhaps she can, well, I can at least go through the number, the jurisdictions with you. So one of the questions that Councilmember Hunt asked was, what of your neighboring jurisdictions have provisions like this in their code? And I would say of your direct neighbors, not a whole lot, Renton does. However, there are quite a few cities in the immediate region that do have these types of the provisions. Most, many cities, most cities have adopted by now the making, the making or possessing burglary and auto theft tools, RCWs. The vehicular trespass one is a little more unique, because it's a, it's a separate municipal code that folks have to create. But I was able to find that Kirkland, Newcastle have it, Sea-Tac, Tukwila, Kent, Auburn, Bothell, I believe there were more too that were not local, but those were the closest ones I was able to find. And then the other question that was raised was how many theft of motor vehicle cases are declined by King County that would be able to be filed if we were to enact this ordinance? And Chief Schwan, she's on the line, and she can speak to this as well, but she was able to track down that in 2022 so far, there have been seven cases that have been referred to King County by IPD. Three of them are still pending, so we don't know what the outcome is of those, whether they'll be declined or filed. Two were filed. One was declined outright, and one, they declined to file the possession of motor vehicle, stolen motor vehicle charge, but they filed another serious felony charge in that case. And then there's some other statistics that were kind of interesting. There are over 250 vehicle prowel theft-related calls per year. There are, Chief Schwan, how many, was it 100 motor vehicle theft reports?
Correct. And there was over 254 vehicle prowls just this year alone, so not per year, that's just in 2022 thus far.
Just 22.
Correct. And two of those, I believe, were marked as they were, we made arrests because they were caught in the act so far this year. And I can't remember the number, but I can look it up, as far as how many were in progress actually, and caught for calls for service of that, those vehicle prowls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Under this agenda bill, we're adopting vehicle prowling as well, is that correct?
I believe that vehicle prowling has already been adopted.
And vehicle prowling is very similar in language to the criminal making of possessing vehicle, of the vehicle trespass statute, is it not? The vehicle trespass statute requires that the criminal defendant knowingly enter or remain unlawfully in a vehicle that belongs to another, whereas vehicle prowling requires that with intent to commit a crime against a person or property therein, he or she enters or remains unlawfully in a vehicle. So my question is, if we already have the vehicle prowling in the second degree, why are we moving to add another crime to our Issaquah Municipal Code by adding making or possessing motor vehicle theft tools? Or vehicle trespass, excuse me, 9.40.060.
Rachel looks like she's busily researching. I'm looking, just have to pull this up.
And I guess as just an added question on there, I guess I'd like a little clarification on intent to commit a crime, which is the state statute for vehicle prowling versus knowingly, which is the crime that we seek to adopt tonight in the vehicle trespass law.
May I have you respond briefly to that, Rachel?
Yeah, please, go ahead, I'm just looking at the stat.
So one of the things is the difference between the trespass and the prowl. The prowl is the intent to enter the vehicle. There's also theft from a motor vehicle, which means they've gone in and they've removed a item. So they've gone in with the intent to take something. You can't prove intent just because they were in a vehicle. And the reason the motor vehicle tool sometimes ties into that, which was asked by Councilmember Hall, is that sometimes literally they use a screwdriver, and it's in the ignition at the time we make a stop. And so that again, is kind of a circumstance, they use it to actually break the ignition and start the vehicle. And so that's what we're talking about, those type of burglary tools. But regarding the vehicle prowl versus trespass, with the vehicle prowl, it's hard to prove intent. That's why the trespass, if they're in the vehicle, they're committing a crime by just being there. And that way, a lot of the prosecuting of the vehicles, to the felony statute, this is referencing when someone's just in a car that's stolen, and there's a, you know, a screwdriver in the ignition, they always, they can say, and we've come across when people have said, "Oh, I didn't know it was stolen," or "I thought it was someone's car." And so I think that's part to it. Go ahead, Rachel.
Well, yeah, I believe that, I mean, you're correct. The key here is the proving the intent to commit a crime is much more difficult than proving that someone knowingly entered a vehicle, I think is the difference.
Okay, that's great, and that does support the other concern that I have, that prowling in the second degree, which requires intent to commit a crime, a higher level of proof on part of our police is a gross misdemeanor, whereas the vehicle trespass is a misdemeanor punishable by nine days, zero thousand dollar fines. So lower intent, lower ultimate sentence. So I just wanted to make sure that we had that lined up, so that we didn't create some kind of inequity there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. And then Councilmember DeMichele, so has a question to flag that.
Thank you.
So, and thank you for answering the questions by email. Just to clarify, you went through that there had been a couple, a couple of these incidents in Issaquah that were prosecuted, or yes, prosecuted by King County, and then one that was declined. And the reason for decline is just resources on behalf of the King County Prosecutor's Office, that's the dominant reason, just to clarify that.
Usually, King County will give, usually they will be, there can be a lot of reasons. They actually have a very detailed filing guidelines document on their website. So it could be that it didn't reach the monetary threshold even. They, there's monetary thresholds in the statutes, but King County actually sets higher, so for instance, for thefts, they actually have their own higher monetary thresholds that are, that are what are in the statutes for their own filing, and they just decline like significantly higher. And they just like, by right, just declined those. Or for instance, sometimes they will only take them if the defendant has a bad criminal history. There are certain things like that. So it may be, it may have been something like that. It may have been that they didn't think it was easy enough for them to prove.
But, but the underlying reason for all of that is that they don't have enough resources to prosecute all of the cases.
Yes, exactly. Yes, exactly. So they, yeah, that's why they did those filing standards, is because they don't have enough resources, so they had to prioritize, correct? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other questions? Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. During the Services Safety and Parks Committee meeting, I did raise the issue, especially related to our homeless population, some of whom are sleeping in cars, some of whom may have permission from other owners to be in those cars. And I was assured that when someone is approached who is in that situation, that, you know, the police will check to make sure that the owner has given permission, so that, in other words, there is a careful check to make sure that it actually is a crime. Is that right, Chief Schwan?
Yes, if someone's sleeping in a vehicle, we're obviously going- Yes, if someone's sleeping in a vehicle, we're obviously going to check, and if they have permission, the only reason we would, there would be a circumstance like this is if, number one, we can reach an owner, there will be best efforts made to try and contact owners of the vehicle. Then, in most of these circumstances, what we're also referring to is more of a vehicle that's already been reported stolen. Typically, a homeless person is not sleeping in a stolen vehicle or something that's been reported stolen if the reporting party, who is the owner of the vehicle, has not actually reported it. And so, that leads us to believing, we usually make contact, and they usually don't have that permission that they're saying they do. Now, if someone else stole it, and then they said, "Oh, yeah, you can be in it," there's, they can, they'll have to argue that in court because technically, they're in, they're trespassing and in possession of a stolen vehicle at that time. So, sometimes that's whether, okay, asking the question, "Do you actually have keys to this vehicle?" Versus it being, you know, "Can I just stay here and there's a screwdriver in the ignition," as the example was used before. But yes, for all intensive purposes, we always try and do our best to make sure the owner's there. We usually have to make contact, and there is certain documentation by law that we have to have when the vehicle is stolen. They have to even document if they want it impounded. They document all different kinds of things in the circumstance before it's entered as stolen.
And just speaking from prosecutor, you wouldn't be able to meet that element in a court case unless you had something from the owner saying, "I did not give them permission." So, there's just no way you could proceed with a case against someone without that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any additional questions? Would someone care to make a motion? Councilmember Martz?
Madam Mayor, I'm moved to adopt ordinance number-
2990.
Amending Chapter 9.40 of the Isaguá Municipal Code, property crimes relating to, to adopt a new section criminalizing vehicle trespass and adopting by reference state law criminalizing making or possessing motor vehicle theft tools.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any council discussion? So, well, I'll go to the motioner, Councilmember Martz, followed by Council President.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate that this, the impetus of this was a conversation with members of the IPD, and so I'm hoping continued good conversations with the IPD on things that are understood to work well in other municipalities. And I think it's good that we gave it some rigor and looked at it and got some good answers on it, but I'm, you know, I'm looking forward to other conversations about feedback that we can get from the IPD in practical, you know, daily interactions with the public, how we can make the city safer. Thank you.
The seconder, would you like to make a comment?
No.
Okay, and I have Council President and Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you. I think my comments are very much the same. I appreciate the way that this came up from the Isaguá Police Department as a relationship to what another city and their police department were doing and saw successful. I appreciate the administration for hearing that and moving forward, the committee for taking it on and really having a robust conversation. I think this is just a great example of all parties working together, listening, and coming forth with a tool that will be useful in our city. So, thank you.
Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. I just wanted to reiterate that this is an issue that we are consistently receiving emails about, and not only emails, but talking to people in our community who are very concerned about the rise in property crimes. Chief Schwan and I were in a forum together a couple of weeks ago with the Kiwanis Club. Several people just shared stories, personal stories about happenings in their neighborhood and so forth. So, Councilmember Martz and I both felt that this really needed to be put on the agenda so that the public knows that we hear what they are concerned about and are responding. And I want to thank Chief Schwan and Rachel Turpin for bringing forward this item so that we can provide the police officers with more tools to support the public who have very legitimate concerns about the rise in crime in our community. So, I will be supporting this, of course, and, but I think that letting the public know that we are hearing them and listening to them and doing something about it is really, really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. I'm looking around, not seeing anybody else wishing to make comments. It has been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 2990, amending Chapter 9.40 of the Isaguá Municipal Code, property crimes relating to, to adopt a new section criminalizing vehicle trespass and adopting by reference state law criminalizing making or possessing motor vehicle theft tools. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That carries unanimously, seven to no. Chief Schwan, Rachel, thank you very much. The next item of business this evening is Good of the Order. Does anybody have items for Good of the Order? I'm gonna, I'm gonna share one and then go into some upcoming council meetings. I did attend the Telus Residents Association meeting last week. They had a very good turnout. They did it at the middle school, which was very, very fun to be inside and see the beautiful school that is there. They shared, what I thought I would share tonight is some of the concerns that they brought up. They know that there is a listening session also scheduled with the council coming up, I believe, in November. As typical of most years, there are still parcels that are either under construction or in permitting, and so there is always questions on projects, and our Director of Community Planning and Development was there to answer them. There was a question about the economic vitality of the very, very small retail area that's at the corner with Lex Berrien's Café, and that is something that my Chief of Staff and I are going to follow up on. There are several spaces there that could have some very cool businesses in it, and there's also a parcel across the street that can be activated or not activated. So, we have a little bit of follow-up work there. I pretty much get this at any meeting I ever go to, which is, "When are we going to build the dog park at Tibbetts?" And I think for any of those of you who have doorbell around this town, you will hear the number of barking residents that we have when you ring the bell or knock on the door. We did talk about the master site planning process, and that that has thrown quite a wrench in the works in terms of timing, but we talked about the potential for a smaller permanent dog park down at the community center. There were questions, as you would imagine, about the speed sign in the school zone under the conditions for the permit for the construction of that school. There, there is some time allowed for the school district to study the traffic patterns there, but I think the community is interested in seeing more now around speeding in the school zone. Questions about a second entry exit, talk about James Bush Road and whether or not that would ever be designed or rebuilt to meet current standards, and the answer is that project is not on the books right now. We did talk a little bit about the Bergsma Project that turned into the Bergsma acquisition, and therefore, the road that was proposed there is no longer possible. And just as you've been working on your ordinances, was it ordinances, well, your work on vehicle theft this evening, police presence, the amount of patrolling, the types of criminal activity and property crime were all of big issues. So, those were the ones that came up, and they're looking forward to having the listening session with the council. Council President?
Thank you. For Good of the Order, I just wanted to follow up on our conversation from last week about the strategic regional representation. Deputy Council President Hall and I have met. We're putting together a memo based on that conversation. We're gonna reach out to everybody. We will have a draft of that out to you by next week, on the 10th, and then we're going to ask you to provide your interests in applications by the 17th, so that then we can have you work with Juliana from the mayor's office on ultimate application. So, I just wanted to give you a sense, we're moving forward on that, but don't expect anything before the 10th. Thanks.
Any other items before I move to a couple upcoming meetings? Okay, make sure I check in on Councilmember DeMichele. October 10th, there's a committee of the whole meeting, and the anticipated agenda items include the 2023-24 budget deliberations and the community mobility survey projects. And October 7th will be another regular city council meeting. So, the next item of business for us this evening is an executive session, and as announced earlier, the session this evening is to discuss property acquisition per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NC and pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NI. These anticipated items are expected to take a total of 30 minutes, and action is anticipated in open session. So, as a reminder, executive sessions are closed to the public, and we will now recess into executive session at 8:41. For those participating virtually, anyone who's not part of the closed session will remain in the main meeting, and you are welcome to stay in the meeting until it's reconvened. So, City Clerk, if you could move us over. We are back in open session at 9:15 PM, and is there somebody wanting to make a motion? Council President?
Thank you. I move to authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary for acquisition of portions of King County Parcel's numbers 355-75-00310 and 355-75-00150, and other property rights necessary for construction of the 12th Avenue Northwest and SR 900/17th Avenue Northwest Improvement Project, and to pay just compensation to the owner of such property, Pickering Square LLC, to be established based on the fair market value as determined through the appraisal process and other potential acquisition costs.
Deputy Council President?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Check and bar. Okay, if there is no further discussion, uh, City Clerk, do you want me to reread the motion or just call for the vote? Are the council members clear on the motion before them? Yes, it's okay to- Thank you for checking. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? That passes seven to zero, and there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 9:16 PM.